David, can we follow the meeting to order? Can we have a roll call?
Alderman Boyd?
Present.
Commissioner Bradley?
Here.
Commissioner Brown, not present. Commissioner Peoples?
Present.
Commissioner Rowe?
Yes, present.
Alderman Cohn, not present. Commissioner Boaz?
Present.
Commissioner Vine?
Present.
And Chair Strather?
Present.
And you have a call.
All right. With that, the first gen of item is an approval of the ministry January 11th. Are there any corrections, changes, or motions for that? It's been moved and seconded for approval, and we have a vote.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Rowe?
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Vine? And Commissioner Strather?
Aye.
Motion passed and so all present voting it.
Very good. The ministers have been approved. With that, we have, there are three, four items on deck. The first two will be given by Roman, and then the third will be the Chapter 99 given by Don, and the fourth is going to be presented by Ken Cross Dan. Okay, very good. And with it, let's proceed.
Good evening, members of the commission. This first rezoning item is a proposed zoning of one dual-zone parcel from a combination of the A single-family dwelling district and the F neighboring commercial district to only the A zoning district. The site is about 20 acres in size, a very large site. It's located at the northeast corner of Tyler Avenue and Sublet Avenue in the neighborhood. The existing uses are used by the Midwest Soccer Academy. The petitioner recently bought this large parcel from the state of Missouri, and due to a misunderstanding regarding the boundaries of the parcel, the petitioner would like to correct the northern parcel boundary line of this parcel without creating problems for its neighbors to the north, potentially creating a dual zoning designation for those parcels. The petitioner is Saint Louis Charter School, which is doing business as Premier Charter School, and representing the school tonight is Janice Denigan and Ben Beager, and they'll be around here for questions if you have any. This is an aerial photograph of the zoning site and the vicinity. So the zoning site is everything within the red boundary line. Roughly the western half of this parcel was occupied by the Charter School, and the eastern half roughly is occupied by the Soccer Academy. To the north of the rezoning site, most of that area is occupied by the Saint Louis Psychiatric Rehabilitation Center, which formerly was known as the Saint Louis Hospital Site. To the west here is the South City Family YMCA. My understanding is that the boundary line was incorrectly shown, and the parcel boundary adjustment would result in this private street, you can see here, that's primarily located within the rezoning site, that boundary line would get moved, and so that street would actually become part of the two parcels to the north. This is an existing zoning map for the area, and you can see the great majority of the parcel is zoned A, single-family dwelling district, showing the light yellow color. There are a small portion of the site, this small corner, is zoned F, neighboring commercial district, showing in the pink. Parcels to the north are all zoned A. Apparently, if the parcel boundary adjustment were done prior to the rezoning of the site, what would happen is this dual zoning designation would transfer onto these two parcels, which I'm sure they would not appreciate, and the city would like to avoid that, too. So this rezoning to the A zoning district would allow that parcel boundary adjustment to happen without creating a dual zoning designation for the parcels to the north. These are some photos of Premier Charter Company. The school has about 900 students in grades K through eight. Here's some photos of the Southwest Soccer Academy. In talking with Ms. Denigan, I understand that the Soccer Academy will be vacating the property shortly, and the school will occupy the entire parcel shortly. These are some photos of the psychiatric rehabilitation center. It includes the large building, the dome on top, that many people are familiar with, as well as the low-rise buildings that flank that building. The center is occupied by the state's Department of General Health. Also to the north of the zoning site, on the left is the South City Family YMCA, and on the right is the private street that with the boundary adjustment would be located within the boundaries of the psychiatric rehabilitation center and the YMCA facility. Also adjacent to the site are some small commercial uses at the corner of Tyler and Sublet, including the pet grooming shop on the left. There's a series of single-family buildings across the street on Tyler, and east of the rezoning site along Brandon Avenue are some industrial buildings, some of which aren't in very good shape. This is the city's strategic land use plan. As you can see, the entire site, including the properties to the north, are all designated as an institutional preservation and development area, which encourages institutions such as schools and churches. The rezoning of the parcel would achieve three objectives according to the zoning administrator, including that the proposals that need to allow for the petitioners to adjust that northern boundary line without creating additional dual-zone properties. As you saw, the zoning has been conforming with the city's strategic land use plan, and staff is recommending. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and again, we have Ms. Denigan and Mr. Teeger of Premier Charter School here today.
Okay, thank you, Roman, for the presentation. With that, we cannot see any hands on the phone, but I would ask if there are any commissioners on the phone that have any questions first? Hearing none. There is one quick one, Roman, on slot number three or four, the zoning, can you go? Why is, if I'm not mistaken, the northern lot of this is zoned as single-family? Is that not where the hospital is?
Yes. Everything on this great big block is zoned A, and then this rezoning site is zoned a combination of A and F, the F, that small tiny corner.
Remember, it's the state for zoning.
Okay. The A zoning district also allows various institutional uses, such as A, a school, hospital, other institutions like that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes.
Janice, who's your sponsor? Who's your charter sponsor?
Umph.
Umph, okay. And are you, what is the corporate entity of the Charter School?
We're enough for profit.
You're enough for profit. All right, so it's going to stay off the tax rolls, but thank you for what you're doing. No further questions.
Okay. With that, any action? Motion to approve the recommendation?
Second.
It's been moved as second to approve the recommendation of the staff who will be rezoning from A up to eight. Any questions? Hearing none? Vote.
Previous role.
I hear a call for previous roles. Any objections? Hearing none? Previous role, that one is passed. The next one? Roman is 18, no rising. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The second rezoning is a rezoning of another dual-zone parcel. This one is zoned a combination of J, non-dual district, and the K unrestricted district, and is supposed to be zoned to just the K unrestricted zoning district. The site is roughly two and a quarter acres in size, consisting of an entire city block. So this is South Broadway, East Calhoun Avenue, Water Street, which has been vacated, no longer exists, so we don't have that stretch, and East Dines Street to the south. Located in the Patch neighborhood, it's right along the Mississippi River. The existing uses are four industrial buildings and one recently demolished industrial building. So this, much of this eastern portion of that building footprint no longer exists. Should also point out to you that the site may be a little bit later, maybe back a couple months or so ago, the eastern portion of this rezoning site was the subject of a redevelopment plan, and the developer was the maintainers of tax base for this redevelopment. The petitioner would like to construct a new 20,000-square-foot industrial building on the site of that recently demolished building. It would be leased with an option to buy to Apex Metal Finishing Company, which is located nearby along the riverfront, and they had recently sold its property to Cal Leoni Elevator Company, a large green elevator operation that's in the midst of a $30 million expansion. The petitioners are Clewis and Judith Stratman, Roman, of the property. Mr. Stratman is here tonight, and he's also here with Gregory Hayden, his representative. Mr. Hayden is a real estate broker with Luxembourg Realty Company, and they'll be available for questions. This is an aerial photo of the site. The existing industrial buildings are located along South Broadway. Much of this black building footprint no longer exists. There still remains a three-story brick building located back here, and where you see this black building footprint that no longer exists is where that new industrial building would be built. Just to the east is another metal industrial building, which Apex Metal Finishing Company has recently purchased and will also be occupying. And to the east of that are some new Pacific railroad lines, which also, that same railroad entity owns many of these vacant parcels to the north. The existing zoning map shows that the frontage along South Broadway is zoned J industrial district, while the rear of the parcel is zoned K. The rezoning to just the K unrestricted would allow the proposed development project to be consistent with the zoning section policy. These are some photos of the rezoning site along the South Broadway frontage. On the left is Hillco Auto and Truck Repair, the two buildings. The middle photograph are occupied by Stratman's carpet or related facility, and the right photograph shows the loading dock area for those same two buildings. Along the east Dines straight frontage, you see that same loading dock area, and the right photograph shows where that recently demolished industrial building is located. And that, again, is where the new 20,000-square-foot industrial building is located. Along the vacated Water Street frontage, again, on the left, you see the demolition site, and to the right is a three-story industrial building that will be renovated and will be used by that same company, Apex. In terms of the adjacent properties to the north is one of those large vacant lots that U.P. owns. To the east is that metal building that will be soon vacated and was recently purchased by Apex, and will be occupying that building as well. And to the south, along Stein Street, is an art gallery and a vacant single-family. So this is a site plan that was submitted by the petitioner. The existing industrial buildings along Broadway are here. The three-story existing building is here, and this is where that new 20,000-square-foot building is located. The city's strategic land use plan designates the entire site as a business industrial development area, which obviously encourages industrial development. The zoning of the whole parcel achieved three objectives according to the zoning administrator, including that the zoning would allow for new and improved industrial development. As you saw, the zoning is supported with the fluke, and staff is recommending approval.
Okay, Roman, thank you for that presentation. Hearing any questions from the committee, or starting off with those on the phone? Are there any questions at this point? Okay, hearing none? Any questions from those at the table?
Roman, am I getting this correct, that this is the second time the planning commission has seen it, because we saw it as a Chapter 99?
Right.
And a rezoning? And Dan, you saw it as a demolition?
We did.
Okay. So just out of curiosity, Mr. Hayden is your representative?
Right.
As an attorney or a real estate broker?
Right.
Okay. So you've had three, and ultimately there'll be probably some things like that, actions with the city. Was there anybody at the city side that was a general sort of project manager from the Business Assistance Center or anything like that, or have you served as the go-between to get through all these processes?
I'll kind of tell you how we got here. Actually, Telegrany and then Apex were the 7,500 site was going to be the redevelopment site. But what happened was the demo permit was pulled, and the engineers and architects were working on pulling the permit to build the 20,000-square-foot building. And then the engineer that Mr. Stratman hired, it's kind of a long story, I'll try not to confuse you too much, but we were actually, because Apex wants to buy that part of the 7,500, we were going to subdivide that and break it apart so Apex could buy part of that property. What happened was that when we sat down with Mary with the engineers to do the subdivision portion of it, we were told that because we had split zoning, that, and because the building was being demoed, that a permit, building permit could not be issued until this split zoning was corrected. So our problem, what we ran into was a Telegrany who was doing their $30 million project, who was under contract and naturally now closed, they, there was a huge penalty if Apex did not vacate that property. So that meant we had, our plan was to get Apex in pretty quickly, probably April or May. Well, because of the holdup of the building permit, we had to then shift Apex over to the Stein's building that Mr. Stratman owns. The penalty, if they're not out by June, it's $50,000 hours a day penalty. So it was a pretty serious business.
Deal it, deal it.
So, luckily, Mr. Stratman owned Stein's. We quickly reversed things, had Apex purchase Stein's, but we had another problem because there was a long-term lease with Creative Packaging and Stein's. So luckily, Mr. Stratman just purchased a 50,000-square-foot building on Michigan. We're finishing that up quickly to get occupancy permit for Creative Packaging, get them moved to Michigan, get Apex into Stein's, and then let Apex then with lease option expand into the 20,000 square foot. So our timeframe is not as bad, but we kind of solved our own problem, but that's kind of a hiccup what we ran into. So I kind of got involved in the subdivision and the sale.
Not very comprehensive.
This is what the usual chairs do, is that all three of them, you know, they're actually all expanding and moving into newer.
That's great.
It's great. I'm going to ask you for your business card.
Oh, yeah.
If you have one. All are expanding. I think you've got affirmative votes from the two places you've been to so far.
Right.
And we'll vote tonight on the zoning change, which is the technicality. That saga is, there's a customer service aspect at the city side that I'm a little concerned about on that, that we, I wish there was ways that we, we'll call you to see if there's something that we can do and improve to help make that be a little smoother.
Well, and I think there was different parties doing different things. I was handling some of the real estate transaction. I mean, the, I guess, the construction people were handling the building, and never really got to the planning department, and so.
And we have an Osmot system to help with that, so.
Yeah, I've had other clients use that, the businesses in the city. So, yeah, right, this one was just, I kind of came in the middle because I wasn't handling the construction or the development and the, you know.
Sometimes we say no, but we do like the processes.
Yeah, and like Roman said, the good news is, is you've got, you know, a Telegrany expanding, you know, with more employees, you've got Apex then looking now at this 20,000 square foot of like, a lot more than what they were going to have, and now they're saying, well, we could probably do some other processing there and grow that, and then now we got Creative Packaging, you know, going into the 50,000 square foot from the 26, so, yeah, so I mean, it's all good news.
Great news.
Thank you. Move approval?
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been seconded. Previous role, there are calls previous role and the objections. Hearing none, previous role accepts 18, no rising, is approved. Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming, for your time. Thank you, Roman, for that. At this point, Don will switch. Pass. And Don will give us the report on blighting and maintain his time. He and Fomose will not have anything in common today.
Dre Moss. Sorry, that was, that was the picture.
And I'm ready to move. I don't know. I heard you talk.
This is a scattered site we developed, all right? So it seems, when you add it up, a lot, more than an acre, so we'll bring it to you. It's probably 37 sites of vacant lots, 18 lots containing unoccupied structures. To be, frankly, it's in the Tower of Spur, Southeast neighborhood, which is an area that's being redeveloped, as we know. It's frankly something that we are doing without the final redevelopment plan being submitted to us, because there was an error in the final redevelopment plan in that they forgot to include two lots, two of the lots. So to be expedient, we're going ahead and showing it to you with those extra two as they play catch-up. But it is in the area, Spur, Southeast neighborhood, that transitions from residential to commercial. The site should show that this is an area that really is truly in transition, the vacancies of the buildings. It will be, as you know, some creative architecture is going into this part of town. Those are, you know, computer renderings are what potentially will arrive as the homes in the area. It is for residential development. And as you know, when you go down Manchester now, the design elements are solid in that they're staying at the street frontage, but it is some clever and creative architecture that's appearing in the growl in the commercial district, and this will expand, span that into the residential area. As you can see, the first two models are done. I wouldn't want to be the guy that has to go watch the second story window from the outside, but I don't mind. More on the construction. And as the strategic land use plan shows, even though it's had some funding industrial, this is a neighborhood preservation area, so we would say in the tree, hopefully you'll agree that it's in conformity with the strategic land use plan, and is not required to be empty for the main, is blighted as those property slides show and documented in the rule. I'm getting particularly picky about making sure that the redevelopment authority notices and pays attention to blight, because it's really a two-step process, about blight and a redevelopment plan. And I get irritated when the city of Clayton lights healthy structures and orders these things, which we show, but do that. And with that, I would ask for the, maybe positive recommendation of both.
With that, thank you, Don, for any representatives for this. Any questions from the commissioners on the phone? Okay, hearing none? Any questions from commissioners around the table?
I just have one requisite question. The structures that are vacant and slated for demolition?
Yeah.
Have they been vacant for a really long time? Are they in just, you know, horrible states of disrepair? Is there any consideration of rehab potential at all?
I personally don't know, but this is an area where RISE is a partner for much of the development, and they're really careful about making sure the pendulum is that we can rehab, rehab.
Don, I can speak to that a little bit. The area of the southwest quadrant of the neighborhood is, has been determined not eligible for the register, so therefore, under the, under the city, this is a preservation review district, the buildings are not considered contributing buildings. They're not contributing in that case. There are two buildings at the end of the block of Vista that we're getting good drawings of from the developer, so we can have a record of them because they're older than the rest, but neither of them would be individually eligible for the register, so then they're not contributing as well.
But certainly, there are two aspects to that question. One is preserving the history that's in those structures, and the second is, is there enough there there with a little carefulness to the renovation and make it occupied?
Sure. And when we approve those demolitions, for all the other buildings, we'll have photographs of the buildings, and when we, every 10 years or so, we clear out our old files, we never throw away the demolitions, we keep those references permanent.
Welcome to super large storage space.
Don, I have a question. So these are new proposed structures that they're going to put in, I have two more questions. Are they similar to the sizes of the houses that were there before? Are they a lot similar to the sizes, or are they reconfiguring everything that's going there?
I wish I knew. I tell you the truth, we're so sure handed, and I'm pitching in and doing this, so Connie did the research. This is, as you look at the profile, is the southern portion of the grow, which has been sort of guided from Park Central, Washington University, and RISE. So I assume it's a mix that is elsewhere in the neighborhood, but maybe not specifically on those blocks.
Two questions. One is, do we have a ballpark placing on what these models are ranging at?
No. I know this developer has done similar sizes that can get up into the 300s.
And the second, which you mentioned, there were two lots that were excluded from their plan.
Yes.
Are they empty lots, or they, what's the condition of those two lots that are?
So, they're not excluding.
So they're not excluded from what you're saying tonight.
Okay.
They're excluded from, there was a hiccup at L C R A. They prepared materials and didn't catch that the developer was asking for two of these two initial lots. Leave contact. We're reviewing it with those two lots and L C R A is not playing catch-up.
So L C R A owns the lots?
No. L C R A just made a circus error by beginning to put the two lots in all their documentation. And instead of waiting for them to get along, we're accepting and recommending all of those. So we're more inclusive. If they had made the error the other way, uh, let me just say this, if they'd gotten to the board, they'll get it fixed before they get to the board alone. We're happy to help them be expedient in that fix so they don't have to come back to us. If we had, if we had approved it without those two lots and then they said, oh, you weaken, we have the two lots, we'd be back at the planning commission adding those two lots. Because you can't make a change in the boundary with ours.
Okay. Moved to approve. It's been moved. Seconded is to approve.
Previous roll.
Called for previous roll. Any objections? Hearing none. The report on three days, 18 are the R pass, then the last item we have. Don comes in. He has wonderful handouts.
Additional. Oh, thank you.
And for those on the phone, what he is passing out is a support for the Skinkert Devolver Historic District letter signed by Alderman of the 28th Ward, Heather Navarro, dated February 10.
Good evening. The ordinance that the Preservation Board and Cultural Resources Office works under is ordinance, it's 89. That ordinance requires that historic district standards be reviewed every five years. That has not been the practice, although it should be. But it also says that when they are reviewed, it says that they need to be approved by the Preservation Board and then they require the Planning Commission approval and then they need to provide ordinance in order to become lots to take effect. The Skinkert Devolver Community Council has created a committee now, probably like four years ago at this point, in order to affect revision of the historic district standards. The neighborhood's been a historic district since the late 70s and they've had standards since 1978. So I think it's been great that they've gone ahead and revised their standards. With us tonight is Nancy Holmes. She is the chair of the Neighborhood Committee that reviews or that, that works with creating standards. The, one reason why this has taken longer than it probably should is because it started under my predecessor, Betsy Bradley, and it's continued under me. And kind of getting untracked once I got here was cause for why it's taken longer than it should.
How's that on tape then?
What you see up on the screen is a map of the Skinkert Devolver Catlin Track, Parkview Historic District. So it, on the left side, in the, in kind of the tan color, is the city limit that runs through the middle of the Parkview private subdivision. On the east side, it jogs around the Kingsbury Square Development. So Kingsbury Square is here. It's new construction and it was left out of the historic district actually. The fact is, right here is the, the old street car shed that's owned by Metro. And it's a wonderful historic building, but technically it's not in the historic district. And then you can see the boundary extends all the way down to the frontage on Lindell that runs along Forest Park, the large house as well. Familiar with, I think. And so that's, those are the boundaries of the district. The boundaries aren't changed by this. They remain the same as they've been since the late 1970s. A major impetus for, for changing the standards, besides the fact that they've just been around for a very long time without updating, is that a very careful read of the standards by the Preservation Board came to the conclusion that window, window changes were not technically required to be reviewed by the Cultural Resources Office or the Preservation Board. And windows are a very important part of exterior alterations to buildings. That was an important reason to go ahead and do this. But the other reason is because since 1970, since the late 70s, we've been doing design review for a long time in the historic district. There's been kind of an accepted shorthand for how the reviews are to be done, which is that more publicly visible facades get more strict review than private facades that are only seen by the property owners themselves in their backyards. So what the goal of this was, was to kind of update the, update the standards so that they actually sort of were in line with the way the standards were being enforced. Previous planning was very general in character. So there's two exhibits with your resolution. One is exhibit A, which is just a summary of the standards. And then exhibit B is the standards themselves. And I will not have a quiz for you on the standards tonight. But some of the most important aspects of them, I have up on the, on the screen there. We started adding statements of intent to the ordinances to kind of give a footing or a foundation for, for sort of the philosophy to go into them. As I just mentioned, there are very good definitions of highly visible facade, less visible facade, and private facade, with having greater and greater flexibility for what one can do to the facade of a building based on how publicly visible it is. We have the standards for window replacements, clear standards for porches, which I think was something that there was a lot of thought given to by the committee and working with One thing that's new to these standards is a more detailed clarification of what work does not require a permit. Almost all the historic district codes have language that goes something like, routine maintenance does not require a permit. But there's been sort of, as I said, an informal shorthand that's gone into what that means. But in this case, they've defined that specifically, which I think will provide great instruction for folks over at the permit office and for our, our staff and in review and also for the residents of the neighborhood and the property owners in the neighborhood. And finally, there are detailed standards for demolition. We have an excellent ordinance covering demolition. And what started to happen with our new standards in the various historic districts is that folks have started to, to model that language in the local historic district. So you don't get this situation where we have a citywide ordinance that's very detailed and very thorough and then you have a local historic district that have stricter standards or more detailed standards that are more general. So they've adopted those from, from ordinance. As I said, a neighborhood committee worked hard on these. You see the support layer from Alderman Navarro. There is also about half the neighborhood is in the 26th Ward. I do not have a support layer for Alderman Williamson, but I know there was a meeting held recently with Nancy and both Aldermen and a presentation of support from both. So I'm not concerned about the lack of support, of the support layer from Alderman Williamson. I'm confident that he will also support the ordinance that goes into, gets put into the Congress bill for Skinkert Devolver Catlin Track, Parkview Historic District. And with that, I'll take my hat.
Nancy, any information you want to give us before questions?
This has taken up a good chunk of my life. And I have the gray hair to prove it. This standard that you see is the result of three neighborhood sessions that we had in, whatever that was, I don't remember. It, you know, she hasn't had that for quite some time, but there was quite a bit of thought. There's been quite a bit of neighborhood input into it. Alderman Williamson, in the meeting that I had with him and Alderman Navarro were very supportive of it, especially in the sense that we do kind of make exceptions for people who may have financial hardships as well. So at this point, I would, I would just appreciate it being done.
You don't want to hold us for another 24, 36 months?
There's not enough wine for that.
I'll never hold that thing.
Dan, could you go back to the, to the map?
Yes.
The Catlin Track is in the, is in it.
Yeah. Although they kind of have a tendency to just kind of go and do their own thing.
I'm sorry, what was that? It's the, it's the lodge lot that's right along Linda, on the south across Park. And new construction.
Make your own thing too.
They have their own thing too, which is by Peterson.
Yeah.
And so the last lot, right in front of the Wash U campus, which is, is open space, is, would be subject to these design reviews.
Yeah.
And over near the MetroLink stop, there's a shaded area that's the, there's Southern MetroLink stop, the Far East Park by that side. That's the by-state parking lot?
Yeah.
So good to know that the design standards would apply to that. Any discussion and controversy about what would these standards might imply go there?
No, uh-uh.
All right.
That's not, I don't think even on anyone's radar.
Give what?
On anyone's radar.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
We had, we had such a hub over the three new houses that are being built at, in the 6,000 block of Pershing, that, that's not even on, that hasn't even hit anybody.
And then on the flip side, I think, the flip side of the existing structure, I think I'm working this right, that the Wabash Station is in the historic district?
Yes, I believe it is.
So that's, that's right.
Yeah.
That's, that's correct.
Yeah.
I will tell you, I'm not always saying we need an automatic support letter because we're using our own judgment. But there are two things that ring in this that we, glad we do in particular, is one, that, that decision point as to where something is a repair and something that's new has been a fungible, difficult things at times. It's nice to have that adopted for sure. But the second thing is, and what you just commented on, windows will now be subject to review and that's often one of those things that ends up being a surprise for us.
Yeah.
So one, how well was it considered by the neighborhood and, and the two?
Um, how well?
How well embraced was having a cultural resources review of windows?
That is something that was highly coveted. That was something that was very much wanted by people in the neighborhood because they value the look of the properties and the window is what makes, makes the property in a lot of cases, especially now that there's so many other options available to residents, particularly with the large windows that we have, using a stash kit to repair the window rather than purchasing an entire brand-new window, in a way that someone can cut their cost if they need to have a repair.
And is Wash U the largest property owner, affiliate?
Yes, I would believe Wash U is the largest property owner still in the neighborhood.
I'll conclude with one last request is if you, as we go forward as this gets adopted, that you be reminding in neighborhood newsletters and such to get the word out that there are new standards, but windows are a part of it because people go automatically, Frank, that they need a review by windows in downtown. So if you help give that news. Thank you.
Just as a reminder, all that about this month or so, though, the neighborhood plan was adopted by the planning commission. So that now any redevelopment plans or rezoning efforts would be compared not only with the specific land use plan, but also the neighborhood plan that was adopted.
All right. So a question for you, Dan, just for my estimation for BPS purposes for my work. Most of these items, or I'd say the vast majority of the items, are on private property and things like that. I did pick up in the street right of way, there are some commentary about sidewalks and replacement and things like that, which is standard. Is there anything here that, that's as far as, anything that my office would do that I should put in the back of my mind as something that's going to be prohibitive or special within the public right of way besides this?
I don't, I don't think so. I think that would be the only thing in the public right of way that would be impacted by this.
Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, yeah, as far as I know.
Just to make sure we're not violating from here when we do it.
Yeah, we, as far as I know, we did not even, that wasn't part of, of what we were.
I mean, it does have some comments about replacing public sidewalks.
Right.
And treat on and so forth, but it doesn't get enough overspecific of it. I'd like to make sure.
No. And we kind of did that on purpose too, because I know some of the historic districts do have very specific notes about what kind of sidewalks can be put in and things like that. And we, as a neighborhood, are not interested in being quite that specific.
Perfect. Thank you.
I should note that Nancy, since this is my neighborhood, did a great job. Why are those two buildings adjacent to the MetroLink station, including the Central West and Bay Building exempt? Is that part of the Trolley District that?
Where are you?
You mean, yeah, or in the south here? The first two parcels of the strip mall?
That, to be honest, I don't know because that would have been done before.
Okay.
Before I was a stateless resident. So I would say probably because the strip mall is a new, is, would be non-contributing and the Bay Building, I could not tell you. And that may be, that may be part of, of a, that may be part of the historic district across the street. I don't know.
But the boundaries were established when?
70. 70.
70. Well, that's my drink.
Any further questions from the, those on the phone? Hearing none. Any questions from those at the table? Hearing none. Action.
Move to approve.
This is moved. Seconded. Call for previous roll. Any objections? With that, no previous roll. That has been approved.
Barry, will you tell people what your fascinating, interesting hobby is in your city life?
Fascinating, which one? I don't know. I don't want to share. Oh, yeah, well, I actually did have, I just pulled my horse.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. It's okay. I, I do drive dressage horses and I get to keep my horse out in my, our, our second mortgage in Forest Hill, so, but I don't have any horse.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
She's just happy it's over now. Find out about the why.
Thank you.
With that, no deleted, delegated items, those street sidewalks, is there a need for?
No.
Okay. With that, any other items at this point? And I will take it simply, Don, as you said, you're still shorthanded. You want to just kind of tell me what you're looking for?
Oh.
Just so there's a knowledge of that.
Well, actually, we, we, I, I, I do want this on tape. I enjoy every moment that I work with our city's personnel department.
Now you want to stop the tape?
Wait a second. Let me turn this on.
So we, with a little miscommunication, we finally closed on, meaning the recruitment has been closed for, for, for a planner position. And so that's good. It will be a planner, three, we hope, with our fingers crossed, but we'll hire two off that list. One would be a replacement for Dick Serica, who used to come, come here regularly. Dick has been hired on contract for some, some purposes, as you saw, you see my pass. And the other would be one that we would find in partnership with the Department of Conservation to be a planner that would be looking at development opportunities adjacent to the vacancy, to the areas that have high vacancy that we're working to create the urban green space to. So urban green space here, what goes next? So we'll, we'll see how that deck falls in around. And then, just because life is life, we also want to be able to be helpful to our current employees and that sometimes is one of the more challenging things with the city personnel department.
With that, any additional business? Hearing none. Entertaining motion? Motion adjourned. The motion is just seconded. With that, meeting is adjourned.